All right, I've got 5:30, Holly, let's get started.
Ready to go.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 16th, 2020 eWeb board meeting. This is an unusual event. We normally meet once a month this month because of the significant amount of information and issues we had to cover. We divided things up in having a second meeting. And officially, this is a work session, so no decisions will be made tonight. There'll be lots of discussion, but no decisions made, and neither will we have a public testimony. So it's just a work session where we have two issues queued up. I may have not said, my name is Steve Mattel. I am the 2020 Board Chair. The other four Commissioners and General Manager, plus several staff, are also on the line, and the meeting is open to the public to follow. All right, we will start with the first item, and that is an agenda check. I'll just ask my fellow Commissioners if anybody has any concerns about the agenda that was printed and made available on the website. I'm not seeing anybody nodding their heads in any particular direction, so we'll move right. Actually, before moving into item two, I am actually going to just insert an item, just on the chance that any Commissioners have any information to report, whether it's related to the topics at hand, or things that they've been doing in the last few weeks that they want to update the rest of the Board and staff about. We will briefly do that. You don't have to say anything, but if you have something to say, now would be that opportunity. Commissioner Schlossberg, I'll ask you to go first. Nothing. And from Commissioner Schlossberg, Commissioner Carlson. Also, nothing. We're just continuing down the line here. Commissioner Helgeson?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
All right, John Brown?
Yeah, just for the record, so they can get in the record, I just wanted to reiterate my appreciation to staff and to Andy especially for working with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to get the electrical service to the pumps, so they could do the fish sorting at the Lieberg Dam. Time sensitive, eWeb came through. Thank you very much. I think that was a very good positive outcome. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. And I have nothing to add for the past few weeks. I guess I haven't been up to very much. All right, we'll move into item number two, and that's the Lieberg-Walterville Evaluation Project Update. And listed here is Rod Price and Mike McCann.
Rod, I'm not sure, are you going to say anything, or are you going to give it to me?
Hey, it's all yours. I had no idea my name was on there.
Okay, good. Good evening, President Mattel and Commissioners. This is Mike McCann. I'm the Electric Generation Manager for eWeb. Tonight with me, I have Patty Boyle, who's eWeb's Generation Contract Supervisor, and Mark Zinnaker, our Generation Engineering Supervisor. Can you change slides, please? Next slide, please. There you go. We're here this evening to provide you an update on our work to date on 2020 organizational goal numbers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting for a moment. Perhaps it's just me, the screen that I have, I'm only able to see just the word triple bottom line analysis. Anybody else having that problem with their screen?
No, I've got the full thing.
You need to change your format to 100% from 150%, Steve, on the setting.
Oh, okay.
Setting part.
Okay, I'll get caught up. And I have a copy was sent to me, otherwise. I apologize for interrupting. Go ahead, Mike.
No problems. So we're here tonight to tell you where we are on the TBL analysis for Lower McKenzie River Project. We've been doing work, we started our work earlier this year. We've made some progress. We have a long way to go. But really, this is a check-in to provide the Board sort of an assessment of where we are right now. And particularly, we'll give you an idea of the work we've done to date, but we have specific asks to think about how we might do the TBL part of the analysis. So the socioeconomic and the environmental piece. So as we go through this, and you think about things we might want to add or address as part of those pieces, you can tell us later on. So in the TBL analysis, we've identified two bookend scenarios. We're going to be looking at, the first one scenario, one is a complete return to service. So this focuses on the Lieberg Canal. And we would resolve the seismic and seepage issues on the Lieberg Canal and return it fully to service. That includes the powerhouse, which also has seismic issues. Scenario two that we're looking at is just to make the repairs necessary to return the canal to a water conveyance structure. So we would repair portions of the canal. It would be a lesser extent than under scenario one. And the canal would go back to being more of a water conveyance for the river. When we built the canal in 1930s, we intercepted a bunch of side streams, and those side streams discharge into the canal, and the canal carries that water out. There have been numerous homes and businesses and roadways and stuff constructed underneath or below the canal that would need to be addressed if we were to move the canal. So those are our bookends. I will tell you, before we go any further, there really are no easy answers here. Every path we are looking at has costs. They are significant. Every path will take time. And so really, this is a long-term issue. Next slide, please. The next slide coming? There we go. So tonight, we're going to be focusing on the Lieberg Project, because that's where we've done most of our work to date. Lieberg and Waltville were licensed together. They were relicensed together in the late 1990s. And we have a FERC operating license for the Lieberg Project through 2040. So we're just about halfway through this. Lieberg has two generating units, produces full capacity, about 16 megawatts, but on average, it's about nine megawatts of power we get out of there. It is a five-mile-long cut-and-fill earthen canal, and seepage has been an issue. You know this from many presentations we've given to the Board over the years. It started to leak from the day we put it into service, and it continues to leak. And that's really the root of a lot of the issues we're talking about right now. Next slide, please.
Great, thanks, Mike. I think this is where I pick up with the overview slide. Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, just a quick overview slide here has a couple of animations. The first animation to come in shows the McKenzie River on the south side of the McKenzie Highway. And then the second animation coming in is the Lieberg Canal in red, diverting water at Lieberg Lake at the upper right, and returning it to the river at the Lieberg Power Plant lower left. Next slide, please. So the trigger for this effort is related to a couple of problem areas. We have a couple of animations here. The first animation comes in highlighting Cogswell Creek, about two miles downstream from the dam, where we encountered in September of 18 indications of internal erosion, which led us to take the canal out of service in October of 18. The second animation coming in highlights another area near the downstream end of the canal at Ames. At this location, we discovered in April of 19 additional internal erosion indications. Next slide, please. So this combination of factors, an increased number of issues at Cogswell, a new problem area of significance at Ames, that motivated us to take a step back and look into our risks. This particular photo on the right shows the internal erosion area at Cogswell, a small diameter, relatively shallow void. The cartoon on the left shows what would happen if you left something like that untreated. It would enlarge, deepen, and destabilize the embankment. That's why the canal's out of service. So our initial investigations at Cogswell focused on this internal erosion issue and what we can do about it. Those investigations revealed the presence of soft soils, and those soft soils highlighted another seismic concern. Next slide, please. So taking a step back, understanding that we've got increasing issues appearing on the canal, we wanted to take the step back and look at the canal, all of its risks, head to toe, so that we could develop a better understanding of long-term investment requirements that we would need in order to either return the canal to service in its existing configuration, or in a different manner to address risks. So for the past few months, we've had a consultant team conducting a desk review of all available materials. They're looking at all the historical archives on construction, construction photos, engineering studies. They're evaluating these side stream creeks to better understand flooding potential that the creeks present. They're evaluating the underlying geology, which is highly variable along the five-mile length of the canal. They're also looking at past incidents, and they're looking at historical repair reports. Next slide, please. Zooming in on one of the canal segments, the consultant team has broken the canal into 10 segments, largely driven by the underlying geology and the configuration of the canal. At Cogswell, we have a relatively short, low-height embankment, and it's underlaid by alluvial deposits, river deposits. It also is under the influence of Cogswell Creek. You can see on this map, we have Cogswell Creek, which can contribute substantial swamp water flows to the canal. Also on this picture, you can see the small black squares. Those correlate to electric service meters, either at a home, barn, shop, and they give an indication of the differences and consequences along the canal for a given reach. Next slide, please. This one focuses on the Ames Reach. At this location, we have quite tall embankment heights. We also have a geology that's underlaid by relatively shallow bedrock. Different conditions here make for different risks. Next slide, please. So in total, as I mentioned, there's 10 reaches that we're going to look at, 10 segments of the canal of variable length, determined by geology primarily and canal configuration, but also by potential consequences. The start and end station, that's simply referring to distance from Lieberg Lake. So at the top, Lieberg intake is 166 feet downstream of the lake. At the bottom, the Forbay Reach is 24,750 feet where it starts from the lake. We know that a couple of these reaches are going to require near-term investment, whether it's returning to service or conveying swamp water, in either case. The risk analysis that we are going to do will better inform, so that we have a full, comprehensive scope of repairs. It's not just internal erosion, it's not just seismic. We need a full understanding. Some of these reaches, lower lane, for example, are greenwood, are not presenting issues at this time. We don't have indications of the need for near-term investment. However, we're looking at each and every reach, so that we can understand those risks and understand the potential for future investment needs that we will then reflect in the economic analysis. Because Patty's group is conducting a long-term economic evaluation of the project that we'll be feeding into. So with that, I'll hand it over to Patty to discuss economics.
Thanks, Mark. So if we could, thanks. And I'll just note, my screen's lagging quite a bit, so I'm following along on paper as well. But if it's lagging for you, let me know if I've gone too far ahead. But as we move into the economic portion of the presentation as it relates to the triple bottom line, we just wanted to make a couple of important points as it relates to Lieberg's performance. The project itself is highly dependent on assumptions on the value of power. And as we've listed here, levelized values range between $31 and $48 a megawatt hour over the remaining life of the project, 20-year NPV. This project is, by comparison, a fairly expensive project. We can go into some of the drivers of those here in just a minute. But I wanted to make sure that folks realize that when we put these temperatures together, we put them in a pre-canal outage condition. So this is a canal as if it were operating today with no particular projects, no particular problems. Project costs associated with bringing the canal back to service or to convey water would need to be included in this analysis on the cost side, and will drive the value down. Next slide, please.
Wait, Patty, I'm sorry. I just want to get clear of that last slide. You're saying that this dam is a money loser, even if it was operating and didn't require any significant maintenance that we're discussing right now, it's a money loser in all but the high-power sale?
That is correct. And that's a result of, you can see on the left-hand side, those power values are significantly lower than what a historic look at power values would have been over the life of the project, if you'd levelize those out. And we'll also point out that that range of values is above today's current value of power. So the NPV is highly dependent on the power value assumptions. This is a relatively small plant. It has, and we'll see this in the next slide, it has relatively high running costs. Why don't we go ahead and go to that next slide? The Lieberg Plant, in particular, is, I'll say, burdened by some expensive cost drivers around high-hazard facilities and requiring significant amounts of labor. It has some complicated infrastructure with two fish ladders, two screens, and the tail race barrier. And it's got fairly old infrastructure that has a higher cost to run. So your observation is correct, Commissioner Mattel, that this particular project does not make money in its current state, if it didn't have a need for infrastructure. And it might be also helpful to look at the next slide, where we've taken a quick look at Waltville and its financial condition. It's a little better off, but not by much. It's a smaller plant. It only has a single unit. It isn't burdened with the same level of infrastructure as Lieberg. But at this point, the medium-case scenario and the high-case scenario are barely above water, and the low is similarly just at break-even. And I realize, and this is over a 20-year period, so its net present value over 20-year period is $1 million without investment. And the Waltville powerhouse, while it's operating, and we haven't identified any infrastructure issues, as Mark mentioned earlier on in the presentation, it was constructed in the same time period. So it almost certainly has seismic issues along the canal that will eventually need to be addressed as well. Okay. So, next slide, please. I'm going to ask Mark, if we don't have any other questions at this point, I'm going to ask Mark to cover our next steps as it looks at the risk analysis that he'll be leading with FERC Dam Safety Personnel.
Great, thanks, Patty. So next slide, please. We are embarking on the implementation phase of the risk analysis. We have workshops scheduled in July, two full weeks of workshops. Participants will include eWeb staff, a broad consultant team that includes some renowned subject matter experts, as well as a regulator, the FERC, will participate, including their chief risk engineer. That particular workshop will involve those participants and expect to be looking at up to 200 potential failure modes for the length of the Lieberg Canal. Each one of those potential failure modes will be characterized in terms of its probability and the consequence if it were to occur, so that it can be plotted on a risk chart. Those risks that plot in the orange or red will receive further attention. We'll be discussing risk mitigation measures associated with those. Next slide, please. Risk mitigation measures could include engineered solutions. It'll be very case-by-case. Each reach of the canal is different and will present different issues, so risk mitigation measures will look different accordingly. Again, some areas may not have near-term risk investment needs. One risk reduction measure is the scenario of taking the canal out of service for power operation. But even that risk reduction measure is still exposed to tributary creek flow, which can be substantial. Flooding on those creeks can actually approach the operating level of the canal, the normal operating level of the canal. So they also would likely require engineered solutions to mitigate risks. We will be developing, after the workshop, planning-level cost estimates, which will feed back into Patty's economic evaluation process, and also be available for use in the public outreach effort that she and her team will be taking. So back to Patty on that topic.
So thank you. So moving, after Mark completes his work this summer, or as he completes that, we really move into probably a very interesting phase of the triple bottom line analysis, where we're going to need to establish what the impacts of any investment in this project would have on the community and the society at large, and the environmental aspects of any of those investments. We'd use some of these tools I've listed here in the public engagement section to really include the community on how this, any change in process, either to return to service or water conveyance, would impact them directly or as a part of the environmental review. So for example, if it appeared to be the best direction to return the plant to service, there's significant environmental impact associated with the construction of any of those repairs. And that's something that we would need to consider in the overall decision-making. It's probably a little easier to see the impact, or to recognize the large impact of what it would look like if we were to route through as a water conveyance system. Would we continue through the same path of the canal, or convey in different manners back to the river, shortening the path for those creeks from the current path along the canal, or a different, shorter path? So stay tuned for what those solutions would look like, and how we might engage, and how they might impact us generally, and how we will complete that environmental review. We first really need to have a better sense of what the investment required is for either one of those bookended projects. And then we'll be able to return with what I would consider a much more robust discussion of these last two legs of the triple bottom line, where public engagement and environmental review come into play. And what we'll have at that point is a range of values for our options, and some indications on what that public engagement looks like, and how we're completing the environmental review and the environmental impact for any path forward. I can put for the next slide, I think we round things out just by a little bit of a graphic on how we see those ranges. So like I said, we have a return-to-service NPV, water conveyance NPV, along with analysis on societal impacts and environmental impacts of any of those options. I think that pretty well wraps it up for what we have planned as part of the presentation. And hand it back to Commissioner Mattel.
Well, I was going to say, thank you, Patty. And Commissioners, President Mattel, before I open it to questions, I want to touch on one of the things that came up. There's actually the back and forth between you and Patty on Lieberg and Waltville. And essentially, we benchmarked our costs for these two projects against other power plants across the nation as part of a group that we belong to for about half a dozen years recently. And these plants are expensive, and they're expensive for the reason that Patty mentioned. They're canal projects, so the dams are five miles and four miles long. They're earthen, so they leak. We have fish species that need protection, so we have fish screens and fish ladders. And they have high-hazard segments, so we have seven-day-a-week staffing and call-out ability. So all those things sort of add up to make them very expensive hydro projects. And we're kind of stuck with that for the time being. There's not much we can do to decrease those costs. But on the flip side, they're beneficial, because they are close to our service territory, and they are legacy projects. So that's where we're at. But with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the Commission might have.
All right, well, thanks, all three of you, for the presentation. I've got about 35 minutes remaining on this agenda item, so I'll open up the queue. Who would like to go first? I know I have questions, but I don't have to be the one to go first. I'm sorry, I got to scroll up and down. Looks like Dick Helgeson wants to go first. Go ahead, Dick.
Well, first of all, I just want to appreciate that we're beginning to get into a place where we can start our conversation around all this. And I certainly want to acknowledge staff's point of view that this is kind of a longer-term consideration as we learn more and we do more assessment. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things and ask a couple of questions. With respect to power values, I know Commissioner Mattel expressed some surprise, or at least pointed out that under all but the high-market scenarios that this project is underwater. I actually am not particularly surprised by that, because am I correct in assuming that most of our power supply would be underwater at this point relative to those market forecasts? I mean, even Bonneville? If we could go out and bar all of our part from the market, wouldn't we be better off than even buying from Bonneville?
You know, this is Susan Ackerman. I'm going to jump in, because Commissioner Helgeson, I would say that with respect to the Bonneville contract, if you're comparing the all-in price of all the services we get from Bonneville to the energy price in the market, yes, it would look bad, but that is not a good comparison. The energy price that's out there in the market is, in my humble opinion, artificially depressed by the fact that we've got a lot of generation coming onboard that is variable and has zero variable costs associated with it. But it doesn't get you balancing. It doesn't get you backup. It doesn't get you all the things you need to do to reliably serve power. And if you were going to go to the market and try to buy all those services to make sure you had a reliable product for your customers, it would come in over the Bonneville price.
I agree entirely with what you're saying there. And my point was not to disparage Bonneville, but simply to point out that all of our resources come at a higher cost than what, for the most part, our market projections currently show, simply because the market is as depressed as is. And that historically is somewhat anomalous, and is sort of the reality we deal with, and the context in which we have to make decisions going forward. But it doesn't mean by any stretch that any of these resources are necessarily bad investments, or were unwise investments at the time, because, as was pointed out earlier, our market forecasts looked quite different. In fact, actual power prices up until about 10 years ago looked quite different than these do. So I'm just not surprised that that's what the numbers show going in, just given the nature of those market forecasts. The other question I wanted to ask, and then I'll be quickly done, is that I'm assuming that what would be the source of power from which we would, both in the short, medium, and long term, replace these projects with, should we make a decision to pursue an alternative that had us ceasing generation? Would we actually be buying from the market, or would we be using some of our other surplus resources, or ultimately having to? Because these are part of our Bonneville entitlement calculation, aren't they?
Right. Yeah, Commissioner Helgeson, that was sort of beyond the scope of our analysis, so I don't think we got into that. I'm assuming, unless Susan Ackerman wants to jump back in, that we would use our surplus and then supplement with the market.
Yeah, I can add just a little bit there, that our surplus is sufficient to cover it in all but... in all but very low water peak usage periods. So it would contribute to a shortage in those time periods. But it really just is not a big enough generator to have a very significant impact, given the length in our portfolio.
Well, I appreciate your-
Dick, I'm just gonna jump in, remind every you and all of us, it's a little hard to keep track of time when we're in sort of a format, but you're at about five minutes. So I'll try and keep everybody three minutes and we'll cycle through. I'm not faulting you, it's difficult when these-
Okay, no, I will mute myself.
Would anybody else like to jump in? Go ahead, John.
Well, thank you. Boy, this is scary looking at this. Question from Patty, did NPV analysis include amortizing the licensing costs when we relicensed this 20 years ago?
I don't, there's no amortized license costs in this NPV.
So if, so basically-
It's going forward expenses.
Upside down before we're even serving the debt that we borrowed to relicense it. These are just, the cash flows are just from revenue minus operations, is that correct? And there's no recovering that cost to relicense it? Because I think it was $190.
Okay, so let me, I misunderstood your question initially. I thought you meant just the investment we made for the staff work and so on to achieve getting the license. So I'd have to go back and look at the specifics of the analysis. I believe the answer is still the same. We do not have in here the debt service associated with those investments prior, previously made as they're sunk or previously. And the decision going forward looks at forward looking values and costs.
Okay, but we still owe that money and we still have to pay it.
Oh yeah, we still owe that money and we still, yep, and we're gonna, and we're gonna owe that all along. And I actually just got a live text from our folks in finance who affirmed that is the correct answer, that we have, are looking at forward costs, forward benefits in this particular NPV.
Okay, and the second one, in the water conveyance scenario, that just assumes that that's, to me, it's analogous to owning a full cemetery. We have no income and nothing but expenses forever.
That's correct.
We would have to maintain that dam and, because that's where the fish ladders are and it creates the lake. And I mean, I'm just thinking about the costs of the water conveyance scenario are gonna be huge.
Well, I think what, that is certainly a possibility. It is possible that the water conveyance costs are not so dissimilar than the return to service costs. You're right, we would, we in this case assume we would maintain the lake and all the infrastructure regarding that. And we assume that a water conveyance infrastructure would be significantly cheaper than for power production. So the repairs required to the canal would be either have a lower capacity or a lower requirement. And that's an assumption we really need to test with FERC dam safety. You know, I think Mark mentioned that stormwater flows can approach the normal operating level of the canal. And so it's entirely possible that FERC dam safety doesn't distinguish between the two scenarios in a material manner and will have investments that are roughly the same. You know, I normally feel bad coming to the Commission because I find sometimes I'm here at the Commission delivering a number of infrastructure issues. If those of you that were a part of the Carmen Smith conversation, but it's not so dissimilar. I feel like, you know, so long as we are really upfront and honest about where we are in the conversation and the impacts, that's usually what works out the best.
Well, thank you. My time is up, but I really appreciate the answers. Thank you.
No problem.
So, go ahead, Sonya.
Unmute. So when you say that there are, that they took into account benefits, was this just from a revenue benefit? Or are there other benefits that have been somehow given a cost? Or not a cost, but given some kind of analysis?
So the benefits included in the economics are simply the power value. We did look at the value of some of the ancillary benefits of the project. It is legacy hydro and in this case, it offsets our requirement for the RPS. It's not a significant value driven piece. So that information was included. So we looked at those and, you know, described a little more fully in the materials for the board. And so the financial benefits have been included. And when we complete the other aspects of the triple bottom line, we'll be able to better articulate the other benefits to the community in particular for the existence of the canal itself, the project in general, environmental benefits for the project and environmental detractions for the existence of the project. Now, I would note that those, you know, some folks attempt to quantify those. We hadn't really addressed that in anything more than a qualitative way or expected to have a quantitative review of some of those more difficult items to quantify.
So, and do these have Black Start capability? I mean, could it actually-
The projects do not at this time have Black Start capability.
Yeah, Patty, or Commissioner Carlson, actually Lieberg does. But we installed that when we rebuilt one of the generators back in 2000 or so. We've never tested it. And maybe Mark can chime in here, but I, you know, my understanding is that our concern is that powerhouse, while it has Black Start capabilities, that powerhouse is 1930 vintage masonry construction and it's gonna be a pile of rocks.
That's right. Depending on the type of scenario, if it's a seismic scenario, it's unreliable. If it's some other grid disturbance, it could be reliable.
So is that with both of them that we anticipate that both Walterville and Lieberg would be rubble if we had a seismic event?
Walterville less so because it's a different construction. So it is a sheet metal and I think asbestos transite siding and a corrugated metal roof. So it's more likely to be standing or recoverable than the Lieberg powerhouse.
Thank you.
Mindy, do you want to jump in?
Well, I was waiting to go last, but then everybody has asked all of my questions.
Okay, well, I'll jump in then.
But I think Frank was raising his hand.
Sorry, Frank, you're gonna have to wait a minute longer.
I can wait, President Matal.
So I have a few, I already know what I want to do with this thing and it's neither of the two options that you provided. So let me ask a few questions. So why didn't you throw out one of the scenarios trying to find a buyer?
We did, we talked a little bit about that. And this is a plant that it could be sold. It was just our perspective that the economics to E-Web are very similar to the economics to a buyer. And so if we were to sell the plant, they would either need to have a much more rosier view of power values for them to want to actually pay for, pay us to take it.
Yeah, well, sure, I mean, we could sell it for a dollar. It would still, you know, based on your assumptions, we'd still be better off there. And we don't know, you know, we just don't know what the world looks like from somebody else's perspective. They may have some hole in their portfolio that somehow this could fill. I recognize that's a pretty, you know, optimistic assumption. But it seems to me that we ought to, we ought to explore that because it wouldn't surprise me that if we could find a buyer, that that would immediately rise to one of our sort of top options with what to do going forward. So you don't need to comment on that right now, but I'd like to see, put some effort into that, unless you have a really good reason not to pursue it if you just sort of know that it'll just go nowhere. And the other questions are about the other components of the project. So the dam, the bridge, the lake. If we were to pursue an option that, you know, that resulted in decommissioning the power production out of that, we don't, we have, why would we continue to maintain the lake? Why wouldn't we just open up, why wouldn't we create a free flowing river all the way up to Carmen?
I, I'll take that one, Patty. Commissioner Matal, I think that is one of our options. That's so far down the road that we haven't really been thinking about what it would look like. But if we decided to decommission the project, FERC didn't find somebody else who wanted to operate it, we would, we would be setting on a course to do just that. And so we would probably at some point want to remove the dam and return it to a free flowing river. That's obviously got significant costs, but it's also really far down the road. That would be, you know, many years from now.
All right, and then regarding the canal and, you know, the fact that it is sort of the conveyance for some number of creeks. If we were, you know, to try and look for solutions to provide as close to kind of a natural flow for each of those creeks down to the Mackenzie. So not trying to capture them all in the way that we currently do and return them to the Mackenzie at one point, but let them each run their, what would be their natural course. Each one of those would have to cross the highway or in one way or the other. And I recognize there's other issues besides that, but that would be a big one. Would whoever is the owner of that road, ODOT, would they be obligated to help in that regard? Or would we be on the hook?
Mark, any ideas?
I would expect that to be an E-Web burden to culvert or bridge the stream bed. There's also some downstream development that complicates return to the existing creek beds.
It just seems to me that if we're gonna put ourselves in a position, which we may not, we had no voters taken, no, nothing like that, but where we're gonna move away from power production on this facility, even if we don't do it now, it's just hard to imagine that we would continue this for, you know, forever. But what we're suggesting right now is that we maintain this canal potentially forever. It seems that we ought to start pulling together a plan that figures out how to return that watershed to a natural system so that each of those creeks can flow right down to the river instead of E-Web having to maintain a canal, you know, from here to kingdom come.
Yeah, and I would say that will definitely be part of our alternatives analysis is to the extent we can put them back, that would be a lower cost.
All right, well, I'm looking at the time, there's, we've used about half of it. Mindy, I'll give you an opportunity to get into the queue. Otherwise, we'll cycle back to Dick if he wants to take it for a second round.
Um, just put me back at the end.
Fair enough. Oh, and I forgot, Frank, I think you wanted to say something.
Yeah, President Matal, thank you. I think, I hope the board gets the impression that we've just shot something across the bow here as kind of a recognition that there are a lot of issues going forward that we need to address. Many of those are economic, many, there's a lot of other ones related to the social side and the environmental side and both benefits and detriments. I also do think that as part of that, we would look at a lot more detail of maybe options in between. So as you mentioned, returning flow to the river because of development could be more expensive than keeping a single return course through a canal. Or, I mean, these are details that we'll have to evaluate, we'll have to work with FERC on. It was, you know, E-Web who diverted flows back in 1930. And so it is viewed by FERC and in many cases legally that we would then be responsible for whatever ongoing costs to maintain it or return it. There's also a number of legal obligations around things such as irrigation and other requirements that we've developed through the years. So it's a pretty complicated set of options we're going to be looking at. And there, at this point, doesn't appear to be any cheap option. These are all gonna require significant investments that we're gonna have to plan for in our, in our capital planning and financial planning.
All right, well, we'll open up a second round for those who want to take advantage of it. And we'll just go in the same order in which we did the first round. So Dick, if you have questions, I'm looking at the time, there's about 16 minutes each. So I'll try and hold folks to two or two and a half minutes just to make sure that there's enough time to get through everybody's questions. Go ahead, Dick, if you have them. Dick, you're muted still.
My cursor was not cooperating. So I'll try to be quick just because I already overextended on the last round. I just want to make a comment that it's good that we're now in this conversation. I want to acknowledge Frank's point and admonitions earlier that, you know, this is a longer term assessment. I think from a board perspective, it's a little hard to be patient and to kind of hold our anxiety around this since there, it's a consequential decision and we've been kind of watching it play out in slow motion. And it's only recently that we're now engaged with staff in a conversation about where to go from here. But I, I think it's true that there's a lot more information to be developed before we're really in a position to make a full evaluation. And that's difficult because I think in the absence of an opportunity to bring some closure to something that's frustrating and difficult, that we all tend to form judgments in the background and tend to have our minds made up. So I just counsel us to be patient and to work with staff here to work through the information and to begin to understand the full proportions of what we're looking at as that information gets developed. I'd also say with respect to a sale, I doubt that FERC would agree to transfer the license to anybody without full resolution of these matters, which would, if nothing else, substantially complicate anyone's ability to acquire the project. So thanks for the opportunity on the second round.
Okay, John?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of questions real quickly on if we go with the, what I call the Matal route and return that lake, you know, to the free flowing river and things. Do we know that we have any legal obligation? Because it'll wipe out the fish hatcheries because they won't have any water source. Do we have any legal obligation to the state or the Corps of Engineers because it's their facility? And number two, that dam provides access to a lot of homes on the other side of the river. And I'm just thinking about the legal ramifications of that. I know there's an alternative way in, but it's rather secure to us, just on those thoughts.
Yep. I think Commissioner Brown, it's way too early for us to address those. We haven't looked into that in any serious way. I know when we, you remember, you will all remember a few years ago when we had to drain Lieberg Lake because of the issue with the roll gates. At that time, we notified the hatchery that really we weren't responsible for providing them water. The same is true with the salmon hatchery, with the canal being down. We've tried to help them out, but it's really their need to get water for their hatchery. But in terms of the access, yeah, we have, we've provided access to the residents through an easement that runs with the original origination of the project back in 1930, when that was one large undeveloped property on the other side of the river. So that easement runs in perpetuity and we haven't looked at what that would look like to untangle.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
Okay, I have a quick question about the NPV and how those ranges are chosen. So when we're looking at the negative range, I mean, normally when I think of like the high, the medium and low, I think of the highs being kind of best case scenario. We're probably not gonna see too much more than that. The low is kind of the worst case scenario, so you know what your, you know, full range is. But Patty, you mentioned that the low range is not even where we're currently at today. And it seems like what I've typically seen from, from the pricing is that it continues to trend downward. So I'm just wondering, it seems like what this is suggesting is even, it's even worse than what the low range is or what the worst case scenario is.
So the ranges, the range for the values is only distinguished by the forecast of the power values. And so the low range has a levelized value of, I believe it's $31, I'm not looking at the slide at the moment, of $31. Today's, today's, today's price for power is lower than that. So that 31, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear early, clearer earlier, is for the entire 20 year period as a- So that 31, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear earlier, is for the entire 20-year period, as opposed to just giving folks a context of where things are today in terms of power. Now, something could happen within the power markets tomorrow or next month that it shoots way up and we'd be looking at a little different power scenario. But if you just look at that 20-year forecast against today's...
I've seen charts of those 20-year forecasts of the levelized cost curves. And it's like 1970 curve is like this, and then it goes down, and then down, and down. Like, the closer you get to today, it just keeps going down, and down, and down, and down. So, I mean, it seems to me that we're probably not going to get back up unless, I mean, the only, one of the only scenarios I can see is if we have some major hit to our power so that the supply is now drastically shrunk, or we actually get some kind of pricing around carbon that ends up fully pricing it.
Yep, I think you made two good points.
Okay, so those are kind of some of the big scenarios that could play out to drive that back up.
Yep, and we may check with Susan Ackerman, who was on the line. She may have other things to add, but I think you accurately characterize it.
The only thing that's out there, Commissioner Carlson, is the prospect of having a regional resource adequacy requirement. Because there is some capacity value to be had from these projects, and there may be another value stream from an RA program, but that is also a long time away. Probably as soon as we will know whether there is such a program will be in the 2022, 2023 timeframe, and probably wouldn't get operational right away. So that is in itself about in the future, always in the future.
Got it. Yeah, most of my questions are poking around the issue of what are those other ancillary benefits that we could get from the project in terms of resiliency? You know, if there is a shock to the system, as we're currently seeing with the pandemic, are there other benefits that maybe aren't being fully recognized in that that are, you know, they're hard to quantify because it's based on 20-year forecasts and things that we can't really foresee? I just want to make sure that we do keep those opportunities in mind and potential scenarios in mind.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, and to that end, that gets directly to what Commissioner Brown...
Oh, we lost Mike.
Well, I'll jump in the queue when he comes back. He can...
All right.
Go ahead, Frank. I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say that gets directly at what Commissioner Brown was just talking about in that we provide water to the hatchery, we provide a lake for recreation, we provide the canal banks for all the residents to walk along, it's used regularly for that. So there is a lot of positive benefit to the projects as well. It just happens right now, the power value isn't very, very strong.
Well, I'll jump in the queue. Just to remind everybody, according to my clock anyways, we've got just a little over seven minutes remaining. Anyways, I think we should be able to get through things. So again, I'll just echo what other folks said, that, you know, appreciate you bringing the item forward. It's definitely a bit of a shock as a commissioner to realize, oh, gosh, here we go. This is going to be expensive and unpleasant and all the rest, but you've got to get into these, we've got to look under the hood and get into it. So thanks for bringing it forward. As to, I think what your original question is, is how to think about some of the other items on that triple bottom line, the economic and, excuse me, economic is sort of, in some ways, a lot easier to move forward with. We're much more accustomed to that. The social and the environmental are really hard to pin down. Mike just kind of alluded to some of the social benefits that people get from it, and, well, we've alluded to a bunch of them, right? There's a small group of people who need access to the other side of the river, and there's the hatchery and all the rest. So that was kind of your question, I think, like how to, or not so much how to, but to what extent do we factor those things in? And we didn't create a laundry list, per se, but I guess we do, we have those things matter. I guess I would actually go back to you and ask you, like, how would you suggest we try and weigh those different attributes? Because I don't have the expertise to, you know, to comment on that, really, but I can see that there's a lot of value to the community. My concern is that it's a lot of value to a relatively small number of people, whereas the, so factoring that in, yeah, there's some folks who get some recreational benefit out of it, but it's not the community of Eugene at large, it's some small subset thereof. And same thing with everything else, environmental and social, that we would attach to that river. So those would be some of my thoughts on those. Yeah, we have to weigh them in, and then we have to weight them as well appropriately. So there you go.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think there's, if there's a question in there, I can use that as an opportunity to say, in our next steps, in addition to doing the work that Mark Siniker was talking about to look at the risks, we're going to be talking to the community. And in fact, the next time we're to come before the board to talk about this project is in September at the Upriver Board Meeting. And so we'll have finished some more work at that point, and we'll be inviting the community to have a discussion with us as part of that. We have developed a communication plan for the Upriver residents around this project, and we'll be implementing that this summer as well.
Okay, well, the other thing I'll say is that whatever it is that we settle on, and I know it'll take some time to get to even a decision, let alone the implementation. But to me, I think that the vision ought to be complete, right? It can't just be a vision for what we want to do for the next two or three years. We have to be clear about what that means for the next 20 or 30 years. And for me, anyways, I guess I wouldn't be satisfied with a plan that had us sort of having to actively manage things in perpetuity. I'd want to see a plan that had us gradually ease out of that, if we were not going to extract power value out of it going forward. If we were going to try and separate ourselves from that, then I'd like to see how we, even if it took 30 years, I'd like to see how we got all the way out as opposed to forever had to manage that stretch of river for, even though we don't have any value that we're continuing to extract from it. I'll stop there because of time constraints, and we have just a little over three minutes remaining. Frank or Mindy, did you want to jump in?
I'd like to jump in. I just want to say, well, first of all, thank you for that presentation. It's a very complicated issue. I guess I want to say I don't want to rely too much on metrics for the triple bottom line, which I know that we normally do, but this is such, is so different in that we've inherited kind of a mess, basically. And I think that part of it is it's our responsibility to fix it, to clean it up. And so some of the metrics for the triple bottom line don't translate as easily as if we were looking at, say, building a second water source or something like that, that we were starting from the ground up. So I guess I just feel a little bit like we have an extra sense of responsibility that's a little bit more qualitative than quantitative. And so I think it's really important to remember that, even though it's a huge bummer to have to clean up something that nobody here was directly responsible for, but it is a legacy of our organization. So that's it.
Yeah, I think you can rest assured that the FERC is not going to let us walk away from that, even if we wanted to. So I think our cleanup responsibilities are going to be forced on us, whether, even if we, whether, regardless of how we might feel individually, we're going to be required to do that stuff.
Well, I think, that, sorry.
Sorry, maybe I spoke out of turn and now amped up a bunch of other folks. My apologies. Frank, why don't you go ahead? And if others have some responses to what Mindy said or anybody else, then let's get those as well. Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, President Matal, Commissioners, thank you. I think to, you know, a different way of characterizing this is not maybe as negative, but to look at Lieberg and Walterville as providing value to our area for, it'll be 100 years. And I think maybe another way to look at that is maybe it's run its course, and it's time to set a new course as part of its future. I think the easiest part of this, and there may be some people rolling their eyes in the background, but the easiest part of this is the financial piece. The more difficult one is looking at all of the other social and environmental issues, and those are the ones that we are just going to have to get on the table, make assumptions, get feedback, get the stakeholders involved, including regulators, including citizens, both beneficiaries and people who are negatively affected by it, and explore all the options. Now, with the exception of investments in the safety of the canal, we have some runway to determine a future vision for the area. And I think that's maybe President Matal, what you were talking about, making sure that we understand the full course going forward. And then set the utility up to be able to make those decisions and work with citizens or explore options going forward. But I will say that, you know, we're so used to diving into finances, there are a lot of other pieces to this, whether it's carbon attributes, whether it's fish impacts, transportation, there's all kinds of things that are affected, and those will be the more challenging ones for this board and maybe future boards to wrestle through. A long ways to go.
My timer just went off, which means the time we've set aside for this item has elapsed, but I just wanted to check to see if anybody has any burning questions or comments they want to get in and on the record before we move on to our next item. So I am just scrolling up and down to see if you have a question or a thought or whatever it is. If you put your hand up, I'll be able to see it as I scroll up and down. I, oh, I see Sonia. Go ahead, Sonia.
Sorry, just real quick, on the other side of it, while I was poking at benefits, I also, the fact that Lieberg in particular doesn't have the resiliency benefit, and actually may have more of a liability if it crumbles and then floods that entire area, adding insult to injury, I'm even less excited to keep it around and worried about the liability of that dam failing then in one of those catastrophic events. So as you're looking at the cost scenario there and those benefits, I would factor in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we will, well, I'll just quickly scroll up and down to see if there's anybody else with a hand up. I am not seeing that on my screen. We have scheduled a five-minute break, and then we have about 45 minutes, give or take, remaining for our second item. I'll just pull the board. Hands up if you want to take the break. Hands up. I am only seeing one. Sonia, are you okay to...
I'll be fine. That's fine. We can keep going.
Okay, well, sorry about that. Maybe that's not the best way to do things. I'll think about that next time.
It's okay. I just wanted to check on my son. I'm sure he's fine.
All right, next time, I'm going to do that differently. That was definitely not the best way. Here we go. We are moving into item number four, is 45 minutes on the clock. I'll put them there in a minute. It's the electric cost of service analysis, the COSA for the Upriver Service Territory. And I have listed Deborah Hart to take us through the presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. For the record, my name is Deborah Hart. This evening, we also have here Adam Ru, the Fiscal Services Supervisor, Alicia Voorhees, who's a Senior Financial Analyst, as well as Amber Nyquist from EES Consulting. As a little background, in May of last year, the board directed management to analyze the cost to serve the Upriver portion of EWEB's territory. Later that year, in October, management returned to the board with a high-level analysis that indicated that the cost differential was somewhere between 10 and 15%. Based on the results of that internal assessment and board direction, EWEB engaged EES to incorporate the Upriver customer class into our cost-of-service model. Amber is here this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to her to share results. And then after that, we'll hear feedback from the board. Amber?
Thank you. So I have a presentation that I will go through. If we can go to the next slide, quick overview, next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so overview of why we might define different customer classes, a review of what a cost-of-service analysis is, followed by what were the inputs and assumptions we used for the Upriver analysis and results, and then we'll have time to discuss. So next slide, thank you. Okay, so customer classes. The classic definition will be that you want to group customers that have similar usage profiles by load factor, seasonality issues. Next to that would be a kilowatt hour or KW threshold. Agriculture, I have an example of a horsepower threshold. Another reason why you might define a new customer class would be a new service. Back when Bonneville moved to tiered rates methodology, we did a lot of new large load studies, trying to figure out the marginal cost of taking on a new customer for utilities in the area. The next one to that would be defined by geographical area. So some utilities serve customers that are in different cities or taxing districts, different states. And then also, there's some geology considerations, which is, I think, kind of the impetus for this analysis. A really good example of, aside from an Upriver analysis, would be the Tanner Electric Cooperative up in this, up where I live. They serve three distinct areas. One is the city of North Bend, one is a smaller area west of there, and then finally, they serve customers on Anderson Island, and they're served with a submarine cable. And so those customers are assigned the costs associated with that submarine cable, so their rates look a lot different from the rest of the service territory. Other examples would be specific utility programs, net energy metering, critical peak pricing, or a lot of large industrials have dedicated facilities. Lighting is another example where we allocate or directly assign plant values or O and M to street lighting. Next slide, please. Here's our graph showing how a cost-of-service works. So the idea is that we take the revenue requirement, so that would be your budget numbers, and we functionalize into components. So any production, transmission, distribution, shared services, and then we take all the items in each of those buckets and classify them for either customer demand energy or just customer meters. And finally, based on those allocations, the costs are assigned to each class. Next slide. So here is the 2020 revenue requirement that we worked with. So just a quick overview, based on your current rates, we use 2019 load data to come up with load factors for each of the classes. We verified that the rate revenues that we calculated based on current rates and matched what you guys have in your customer system. And then we also looked at verified power costs to confirm that those looked good. So no rate increase overall for the revenue requirement study. And then on the next slide, I just wanted to show what an Upriver customer usage looks like compared with Eugene area. So we looked at three customer classes, residential, small, commercial, medium, general service, and compared the usage characteristics between the two different areas, and staff provided data for this. So we see that there is about 2,500 customers upriver, and their monthly usage actually looks quite a bit different from the Eugene area counterparts, as you might expect. For example, residential customers upriver use a lot more energy on a monthly basis than those in the Eugene area, probably due to heating fuels. Similar with medium, general service. Small commercial was one that was interesting because Upriver usage was actually quite a bit lower. And I'm going to use this to explain the results of the cost of service, which is going to be in the next two slides. So next slide. which is going to be in the next two slides. So next slide. So just overall assumptions, we didn't change any of the allocation methodologies from the previous cost of service analysis. EWEB uses a minimum system methodology for allocating costs. So this means that the distribution system is in place because you have to serve customers on your system. And it's there's some costs that are related to the demand that a customer may have, but the meter is in place and the wire is in place because you're serving a customer, even if they only have one light bulb that they turn on. This is a methodology that is commonly used by utilities in the Northwest. It results in having a larger fixed monthly charge, which is good for revenue stability. It also just I have some notes on here. It shifts costs from some of the larger consumption customers to the lower average consumption customers because you're putting more cost into that customer component rather than on the demand. So we did staff went through and came up with some information on additional costs to serve upriver customers that aren't incurred for the rest of the Eugene area. And one of those, and I'll just use it as an example, was the vegetation management cost. So lots of trees up the McKenzie River. Staff estimated about $650,000 per year just to manage the vegetation around the the system up there. So we took this cost as long as well as other cost items like meter reading, and we assigned those to upriver customers. And we allocated the the cost to the classes based on customer, which is consistent with the minimum system approach that I just described. So next slide. So here are the results. Keep in mind, we did model all of the customer classes, even though table two shows just the six that we're comparing. This table compares the revenues that are currently being collected for each of each of these classes and compares it with with the costs that are assigned to them. And we see that upriver customers look like they need about a 14 to 31% rate increase compared to what they're currently paying. And I want to make the point that this rate increases has kind of two sides to it. One, one of the sides was when I was talking about the different usage profiles, higher average use for upriver residential. This translates into they're actually paying a lower average rate than Eugene customers. So part of the the needed rate increase is because they're paying less per kilowatt hour. And then the other part of the rate increase needed is because of those extra costs that we assigned. Let's see. So next slide, please. Thank you. So we did this this exercise and came up with some pretty good results. We think that, you know, with with additional tracking or tracing, maybe there might be other costs that could in the future be assigned to upriver customers. Overall, based on what we have now, it does look like they need pretty large rate increases of above 10%. But overall, their their contribution to your overall revenue requirement is pretty small, is less than a half a percent. So that's all I have. So I think ready for discussion. Thank you.
And if you could go to the next slide, I said a wrap up one.
Oh, yes.
So I think we're just wanting to open it up for discussion and hopefully get some feedback tonight. We're bringing back our financial plans next month in the July board meeting, and that really kicks off our budgeting process. So from there, we'll incorporate the feedback we get tonight, our other changes to budget assumptions, and we'll be bringing back in the fall our budget and rate proposals. So hopefully, we'll get some direction tonight to incorporate in this fall proposal. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, all three of you for the presentation and for the information. We got about 30 minutes remaining in this for this agenda item. So I'll open up a queue. Would anybody like to go first? If so, just raise your hand. I can see everybody now. Go ahead, Sonia.
Hey, I'm curious about the last this. You're talking about the base rate and the the amount or the sorry, the difference. I'm not saying this very well. Okay, let me start over. The the percentage increase in the upriver would need to be more because the basically the number of kilowatt hours that using makes that base rate less. It's spread over the the fixed cost of the base rate is spread over more kilowatt hours because they're getting more out of that base rate. Did you look at actually just raising that base rate for for the upriver customers?
Yeah, so you're right about the interpretation. We didn't look at specific rate design. That is one way you could address it would be to increase the basic charge.
So it begs the question, if we if we raise the base rate, then would it bring how I mean, how much would we move it that would offset the percentage? And maybe you're not the right person to to ask that question too. But it's something that I would think about as we move forward with this potential concept. Because, you know, looking at a 31% increase is really huge. But it it may be that, you know, our fixed cost just to get power up there is really where that that charge needs to be loaded. Because that's that's just, you know, to 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 give them that first kilowatt of power, it seems like we have to do so much more just to get them that without how much they actually use.
Yeah, we did look at. Sorry, go ahead, Adam.
Oh, I was gonna say I can jump in real quick because there was a a little bit of an effort several years ago where we were doing a lot more rate design proposals. And we did increases to the basic charge recently. So I think that that was something that could be potentially addressed as a part of this, whether it be for that class or for other classes, if that was the direction the board wanted to provide.
Okay, thank you very much for all the work. I know none of this is easy to to put together. So thank you.
Well, I'll jump in in the queue. Well, for me, it's a as far as the feedback's a bit of a no brainer. If we are undercharging them 16 to 31%, that means, you know, they're being subsidized at a at a rate that's higher than than is acceptable according to our own policies. I think when we exceed, you know, an estimate of, you know, 5%, then we are obligated to take action on that. And I know Dick will say, and I'll say on his behalf, that there's some art and science involved in these calculations. So it's not, you know, so we should be cognizant of that. But my guess is that when you get to the 16 to 30% estimates, that it's just art or science, you're still going to end up by having been significant. Your subsidizing is is going to be taking place. So for me, it's just a question of, you know, how and when to implement increases to the rates for the upriver community. And so one question I would have for staff is that based on our gradualism policy or approach, what, you know, what is sort of the maximum amount we would consider raising the rates by each year so that we were, you know, getting to where we needed to be in a relatively short period of time, but might but simultaneously kind of holding dear to our gradualism approach?
Well, I think that one thing approach that we could take probably to bring back as part of our proposal would be to look at some and look at the individual range of bills and see what that impact looked like. Because sometimes, especially if we're looking at a basic charge and energy charge, there might be some dispersion in the range. So we could maybe bring back some more information based on some more detailed billing impact and come up with a plan. And if there was a strong preference for, you know, a specific period of time, whether that's a two or three year, we could we could bring back a proposal to reflect that. But seems reasonable to me to go with like a two to three year range with some of these significant increases.
I mean, that's roughly what I was imagining in myself. I'm only one out of five, but, you know, to hit folks with a 16 or 30% increase, especially in this particular year, you know, that's a pretty tough thing. And at the same time, it, you know, they are being subsidized and have been, it sounds like, for a really long time. So they've gotten that particular benefit as well. And we, in my own view, we need to fix it. It's just a question of like how and when. So in my view, yeah, I'd like to see some proposals, like the percent that we might increase in the the basic charge or what we might increase in terms of volumetric charges and over what period of time. Those would be the things that I'd want to see. It's not, you know, that we could consider in July and August and beyond and start factoring into our plans. You know, at the end of the day, it's not a it's a significant amount of money. I think it was something like $700,000 is what they are being subsidized. You know, significant in some regards and not terribly significant in others. The rate impact, the rate reduction, as you said, to the EWEB, excuse me, the Eugene community, if we were to implement this immediately, would be point or half a percent, I think, is what I read in the background. Or so it doesn't have a significant reduction. So it's not about that to me. It's just about the basic fairness issue of this that we I think are obligated to impose. All right, well, I'll stop there and open it up to others. Dick, go ahead.
Since you've made an effort to preempt my rebuttal, I I will simply focus in on. I'm not ready to call this a no brainer. First of all, I think it's a case that when you're working with COSAs that involve roughly a quarter of a million dollars in revenue requirement and 80,000 customers, it doesn't take much proportionally to move numbers around that get you to things like 10 or 15%. That's particularly true in classes like street lighting, which aren't pertinent here. But in my experience with COSAs, it doesn't take much of a change in allocation factors or direct assignment for relatively small classes to precipitate high numbers. And those operate within a bandwidth of acceptable practice. So generally speaking, I agree that we want to not have subsidies. But I think the practical reality is that no matter how precise you think your COSA is, you're always going to have some level of subsidy because all individual customers at some level are uniquely different. And so the question becomes, at what level do you choose to make those distinctions and on what basis? And so the question I would pose to the board as a whole is kind of a policy question is, so we've served up there now for eight years or more. This is not the first time it's come to our attention that maybe costs are higher. In fact, I think we knew have known that all along. So one question I would ask that might help illuminate the policy discussion is, what has changed such that at this point we would choose to make a change? And I'm not saying there necessarily isn't a reason for that. I just haven't heard it articulated because we're not dealing with new conditions here. And then secondly, you know, I can think of at least a half a dozen situations within our COSA process and our service characteristic where at least there are some potential reasons why we might have subsidies of a similar level. And I just would quickly point out things like overhead versus underground, you know, customers with electric heat versus other forms of heat, downtown network, customers with solar arrays that don't pay appropriately a share of their fixed costs. And so there are also customers who make a much higher use of our customer service and our credit and collections functions. And, you know, so if half a million dollars, give or take, is the threshold of cross subsidy that we're concerned with, are we saying that that at this point, our confidence in the precision of our COSA model would cause us to go after those kinds of things as well? Or are we simply saying for other reasons that it's now time and appropriate to to decide to to make these particular folks the subject of of a separate class? And I I guess regardless of what we do here, I just want to be clear about what our criteria are. And, you know, it's not like it's not like if a subsidy exists here that that's new. So on what basis are we choosing at this point to make this particular distinction when there may be other reasons and other class subclasses of customers where, you know, I mean, our tree trimming costs are higher in the South Hills where I live, you know? Probably not appreciably more on a per customer or per line mile basis than they are upriver. So I'm just playing devil's advocate a little here and wanting to make sure that if we make a decision to go forward, we're clear about in policy consideration what the parameters are that would cause us to reach out and make these distinctions now in this instance and in the future, perhaps with respect to some of these other suspected areas where there might be cross cut subsidies.
Well, thanks, Dick. Good points, of course. John, go ahead, and then Mindy, you'll have your next.
So I just have a comment on the delivery charge that Sonia talked about. I think we're in the low 20s and right across the street upriver, Lane Electric is over 30. I think they're 34 for a delivery charge. They've been raising their delivery charge quite a bit, just food for thought. Because I'm I would like to consider that if we're going to talk about rates. I think, you know, to maybe address some of Dick's points, I know during our last ice event and our snow event, you know, we have 2,400 customers up there, but it's 50% of our physical service territory and over half of our crews were there. And, you know, we had to bring in, you know, it's very, to me, it's very expensive. And I do think we we have precedent where we charge, don't we charge a delivery elevation charge for water? Correct me if I'm wrong, for providing services to people in in different geographic areas. So I'm willing to explore this further and see see where we go with it. But I'm not just say that, you know, granted, Dick, we can't be, you know, 100% equal to everybody. But look at the logistics here, you know, half of our service territory is out of 88,000 customers. There are 2,400 up there, but it's physically physically 50% of our geographic area. And we're an urban utility, not a rural utility. And I think it's just a matter of it's just because we haven't done something in the past we should look at in the future.
I'll go ahead and pass it to Mindy and then give you a chance to rebut if you'd like, Dick.
Okay, thanks. I have a question and a comment. So my question has to do with the usage. And just the fact that upriver, their residential usage is some is more than here in town. And I'm just wondering if we keep data on customers that have taken advantage of some of our like efficiency programs and stuff? And if there's a difference between what folks upriver have taken advantage of, if that is all is a factor? So that's my question. And then my comment is, I feel like this discussion is very similar to the one that we just had. And there's just some things that we've kind of been handed or grandfathered in. If we were to design a utility right now, we would never have such a disjointed geographic area. And while I understand the economic realities of this, I don't want to make sure that we I want to make sure that we don't unfairly penalize people for some historical decisions that have been made. I also understand that we need to move forward. And obviously, we can't stay with the way things were in the past. But I just want to be sensitive to that also because we are having this big discussion about the canals. And to have the discussion about the canals and then potentially raising people's rates at the same time might seem a little overwhelming. So I just want to make sure that we're sensitive to the the needs of the upriver folks in general.
Dick, I offered you opportunity to rebut if you'd like to. So go ahead, and then we'll then we'll jump back into a complete queue.
Well, I just regardless of where we land ultimately on this, I want to know why and on what basis so that we're clear in a policy view about what criteria drive the decision. I think we're up there serving those folks because in the early days, we decided we wanted to do that. And there were good reasons from from the perspective of our resource extraction up there. You know, maybe one of the reasons is, well, those resource extractions are not as lucrative as they used to be so that we don't have as many benefits to share. Maybe that's a reason. Or maybe we're tired of hearing from those folks whenever there's an outage up there because they don't appreciate all the good work we do. Maybe that's a reason. I'm not sure how legitimate that would be or saying that is a reason. But I whatever the it's not enough for me to say there is a 10% or 15% cost difference because I think there are other circumstances in our cost of service view, like the way we allocate the taxes that are paid on the International Paper Facility to the city of Springfield, where we've made the opposite decision and decided to put those costs on our customers as a whole. So in order to have integrity for me in in this decision, we have to be consistent and clear about what our determining characteristics are, and we need to apply those appropriately. And if, in fact, the distinction is there's half a million dollars, give or take, in cost differential on the basis of those customers, well, then I think we need to be prepared to apply that kind of a consideration equally. we need to be prepared to apply that kind of a consideration equally when there are other instances where there may be similar cost transfers. So for me, it's kind of an integrity and policy view that we need to come to. And I'm not saying we can't come down one way or the other. I just, I don't want to make that judgment on the basis of kind of an emotional view and, and sort of reaction to the fact that there's some level of, of subsidy because I think the practical matter is that exists other places and I want to be consistent.
All right, we have just a little under 15 minutes remaining. So that's enough time for another full round if we want to. Sonya, go ahead.
Okay, well, I mean, to the point, I think part of the, part of the reason that I'm willing to look at this is that we have had this policy and perspective that we don't want a lot of subsidy from a fairness perspective. We don't want cross, you know, cross-sector subsidies because there's other ramifications for that, too. So part of my impetus for what be willing to look at this is to try to shore up those places where there's a lack of fairness. I did a quick, quick division of how much the 800,000 divided by 2,500 customers, it's like $320 a year. But that's, you know, that's a significant chunk, but that means that the rest of the Eugene area is subsidizing that smaller group up there for that amount. I, I understand, you know, that we may do that. I do wonder if on the, the solar side, because I think this conversation comes up more on the solar side than anywhere else, is that we continue to say that we have a particular policy around our rate structure in support and not supporting solar because we don't want cross-subsidization, cross- subsidization of classes. And that's why we, we, we price solar in a particular way. Now, if I'm wrong in that, please enlighten me, but that was my general sense. And that's part of the, the story that I've kind of become accustomed to talking with environmental groups and such about our policy around not subsidizing. I, I do think, you know, it's, it's valid to look at what we've done in the past, but we should always be willing to look at, we're in, we're in a new realm here. I, I don't feel like history has to dictate what we do going forward, otherwise we wouldn't be here. So we should constantly be looking at, at fairness and we should constantly be looking at how we do things and can we do them better and should we do them better? So I would also like to be consistent. And I think that this is in line with our consistency principle of not subsidizing potentially. Now, how we do that and how we get there and why we do that, you know, that's, that's up for interpretation. But I, and I, I wanted to throw out on Mindy's point about the efficiency, I also wondered if there was any focus up there on the efficiency side. And so folks are using less power because they probably have more, you know, cold, cold days and such. So on the other side of that, fairness in terms of utilization of our efficiency programs, I don't know if they use them at a greater rate or not. But I was also, that also kind of piqued in my thoughts there.
I'll, I'll just jump in and, you know, be a third asking for some additional information according to Mindy's question. So maybe staff could look into that a little for us and provide some background material on the, on the use of various programs that we offer and the extent to which upriver customers take advantage of that. I'll jump in the queue. Just, I'm just basically running the same order as we ran the first, the, ran through the first time. Dick, I'll just say like eight long years together and everything was great. And now we're going to end on a policy dispute and I hate that. But, you know, here we are. I'll do my best to be civil and I know you will as well. I, my own feeling is sort of in line with what Sonya said is that, you know, we, we, we have a goal of eliminating subsidies when they increase beyond, I think if it's three or four or five percent, something like that, because we recognize it's impossible to be precise beyond that degree. And to answer the question, well, why haven't we done it for some other classes that you pointed out? I think it's largely a, a question of opportunity and the mechanisms to kind of manage that. So we have certainly talked about putting in place a demand charge, which would get at the folks who have solar systems, for example, on their roof, when we have the smart meters in place to, to allow us to do that. And as you all know, I have certainly argued for a change in, in pricing or, you know, be relative to the downtown network because they get so much additional benefit for that network and we all have to pay the costs. And there have been a handful of opportunities where I have advocated for that. So I'm all for the fairness and advocating and, and applying it equally across a range of, of, of situations and classes. To me, you know, I don't think that when an opportunity presents itself to make an improvement, we ought to take it. I don't think we ought to stall based on the idea that we shouldn't do it for one class and two where it have the opportunity to do it for everybody simultaneously, which kind of sounds like the argument that I'm hearing that, you know, if and when we can charge properly for demand across all of our residential and, and commercial classes when the smart meters are in place. I, of course, won't be here, but I would be, have been, be the first one to raise my hand in support of it because that would be the fair thing to do. I'll pass it to John Brown.
Thank you. And in the spirit of making sure I present both of my perspectives, I'm going to remind everybody that the upriver residents pay silt. They pay 6% of their bill to the City General Fund and they don't get a penny of benefit from it. And so there's, you know, that's, granted, they don't get to vote for any of us or, you know, kick us out if they don't like what we do. But more importantly, they're paying into that fund, not because they want to, because they have to. And they, you know, theoretically, we get a benefit for it here in the city because it's general fund money and they don't. And so I just want to make sure everybody keeps that in the thought process when we move forward on this. Thanks.
We have a few minutes remaining, actually more than a few. Does anybody else want to jump in the queue? Well, it wouldn't be right unless you had, you get the last word or the second last. I don't know.
I'm ready. So I, I just want to make sure that as we leave this, that you're not misunderstanding what I'm trying to say. I'm, I'm in no way saying that because we've done something historically, we can't make a change. Absolutely, that's wrong, you know? I just want to be clear about the basis for making the change. And if it's simply that there are cost differentials that we can now divine at a more discreet level than we've historically chosen to, then I want to apply that across the board. And if, if, you know, if our residential customers in the city of Eugene are paying $300, $300,000 in lieu of taxes to the city of Springfield for the benefit of serving the IP facility, you know, I, I think that's as much of a problem as, you know, the upriver customers having higher storm restoration costs or tree trimming costs. And so if that's the basis for making the change or changing the level at which we make these distinctions, and, and, you know, I agree in some respects, there are timing issues, although there are, in fact, rate designs that we could imply without demand meters to treat the, for example, solar issue. So, you know, and, and if we're, if it's, if we're not willing to do that, then there must be some other reasons that we're choosing to make a distinction here that I at least would want to have be exposed so that going forward, as we administer our policy and make further distinctions that, that the board could be clear. And so I'm no, in no way saying we can't do this or we shouldn't do this or, or we, we can't depart from history. You know, I, I just want to be clear and consistent in the criteria that we use to apply this going forward. And if in fact, it's a cost of service justification, I want to know why, when there are at least several other examples of potentially similar or even higher cross subsidies, why, why, and I, maybe I'm wrong about that. I don't know that staff would necessarily agree that those even exist, but that's my perspective. I'll, I'll adjourn my diatribe.
Go ahead, Sonya.
I'm curious if we could get a list of maybe some of these, you know, places where we do have cross subsidies. You know, John brings up a really good point around silt. If the, you know, if the whole basis for that is that we're paying prop, we're paying this in lieu of taxes, that property wouldn't be taxed by the city of Eugene. So does the COSA handle that or not? I'm guessing it doesn't because we just have to pay it on our total revenue. It would be good to look at, at all of those different cross subsidies and see where we can kind of shore it up. So that's it. Thank you.
I'll jump in for a moment. Sorry, Frank, I'll get you just a second. Just, just really to respond to some of Dick's concerns. And I agree, we, we need to always be clear because we're the best, the only way we're going to be able to justify what we do is if we can demonstrate a clear set of policies and criteria and show that we apply them evenly. So, you know, we, I think we already have on record that we don't generally make changes until we can demonstrate that there's a roughly, I get, I keep coming back to three or 5%, but it's something like that because we can't be precise. I think there's something to be said, as you said, that, that the total amount of money on the table has got to be in excess of some amount. You know, we're not going to go through a massive change for, to save $5,000 or $10,000, right? It just doesn't make sense to put that kind of staff effort into it. So there's some threshold there and I, and I don't know precisely what it is, but we're talking about $700,000. And for, for, for me, that succeeds whatever the threshold would be. And then there's just the ability to act, the mechanisms, are they in place such that we could actually collect the money? And is it practical essentially? And in the solar case, it's currently not really practical. But in, in this particular case, it is. But I'm with Sonya, we ought to be turning over these rocks as we can. And if we can answer those criteria and perhaps others, then, then we ought to, you know, then we ought to pursue it. I also wanted to agree with John Brown's point, if there's some way to factor in the, the, the silt tax or the silt piece that they pay so that, that, well, we ought, in my view, that that's, that's reasonable. We ought to factor that into the estimate of, of cost and value that the upriver folks get out of it. Frank, I think you had a question or something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, welcome to rate design. You know, I mean, it's one of the most complicated and emotional things that we deal with because it really does affect every customer. I think it's probably a good thing for us to revisit the five principles that we developed around rate design. We, we do have a gradualism one, for example. We have one about cross subsidies and, and just make sure that we are applying those equitably, probably not equally, because I think that there are different cases, there are different values, such as, you know, the silt was brought up. Silt is a cost that's applied by revenue, so it's not applied by customer. And that's, that's a contractual cost that we have for some period of time that is then borne by each customer. And so I think probably as we go forward, before we come back in the fall, we should make sure that we revisit this to the extent that I do believe over time, we absolutely have to diminish the cross subsidies. And part of that is because when we get into new products and services, that, for example, would, there would be a green attribute, a carbon attribute for, for different types of products and services, we need to be able to work off of a base that is fair for those who should choose it or should not to choose it. And so, you know, when you look at things that are very sensitive, like basic charges, we're kind of in the middle to low end now. You know, I think that Commissioner Brown mentioned Lane Electric at, at a little over $30. You have Blatchley that is over $50. And then there's some in the state of Washington at zero. And so if, if you, you have to look at subsidies within just usage patterns. And so I think there's a, a bigger opportunity. We need to make, maybe recommit to the principles that, or adjust the principles that we've developed. And then we can develop the path forward. But I think that it sounds like the board is, is wanting to revisit that. It's, it can be a sensitive issue. But I think it's probably time that we revisit that in a way that can provide some path going forward that's fair to everybody.
All right. Well, we just have a minute or so remaining on the clock. I'll just remind the board members that staff did ask us for some direction so that they know what to prepare, what to begin to prepare next month and the month after, as they start to build the case for what the, what the rates need to be, not just for upriver, but everywhere else this upcoming, this up in December, when we finally make that decision. So I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to be clear with them. And I don't know that we have. I'll ask Deborah if she feels like she has clarity. And don't be afraid to ask for it because I'll just turn around and make sure everybody is clear. That's our job.
Thank you. So this is, this is what I heard. The first was a really clear ask to provide some additional efficiency, usage for upriver and, and we'll follow up and see what's available there. But I'm generally hearing that the board would like us to further explore and look at what kind of a proposal we could bring back with gradualism and maybe some division between the basic charge and the consumption charge. We would wrap that up as a part of our November rate proposal, but we could certainly revisit before then.
Well, hold on, I see your, your hand, Sonya, but if you don't mind just a second. I think the person who maybe had the most heartburn about what that summary was, was Dick. So maybe I'll just give you the opportunity, Dick, to, to shape that in any kind of way if you wanted to.
I would prefer, because I'm at the risk of worrying, am I welcome, that you let Sonya go first.
All right, fair enough. Sonya, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that if, for some reason, the COSA, and again, I've noted this before, but if the COSA, the COSA always feels like this black box of things go in and then it all, you know, it just pops out with this magical number. And all of the other ranges that we have, they have a range associated with them, which makes me feel more comfortable. I know that you can't have that when you have a price that you have to charge. But what I, what I will note on there is that I'd like to see if that silt isn't factored out of there. Like, what is, what does that rate look like if silt is taken out? I mean, if we really do believe as a board that, that the benefit to the upriver customers, they don't get that from that property or that, that payment in lieu of property taxes, does the, does it even, does it even factor that $300, you know, $320 rate per person or per service difference once we take that out? I mean, if, if we decide as a board to take that out of that COSA, if that's, you know, something that we can do on a policy perspective, we may not even need to look at the policy changes and gradualism and all of that if that, you know, levels it out. So anyway, I, I just wanted to make sure that that got put in there because I'd like to see how that adjustment might change it.
All right. Well, and I support that as well, just to jump in real quick, that I think that's a really good point, that they are paying in somewhere that they don't get any benefit from. So this is probably where the art meets the science, but I'd ask our staff to kind of use their arts to try and, you know, factor that in. Go ahead, Dick.
On that point, I think, just be careful there because I think that might get us into a little bit of a slippery slope because they don't enjoy the same, same level of service that we enjoy here in town either. They're exposed. I think they have probably more and longer outages than we have. So if, if we take it to a realm that's about what they get in benefit for what they pay, you know, then I think the city would argue, well, you know, as a condition of you're being able to serve anybody, you're obligated to pay these taxes and you pay them on the revenues that you derive from all your customers. So that's the franchise fee that everybody pays for having the benefit of the municipal service. And, you know, they, like everybody else, have to pay that. So, you know, I, I think there are arguments on both sides. I just want to say that I, I appreciate discussion. I'm, I'm willing to stay open on the question when we ultimately get to it of whether we make an adjustment or not. I think the timing and the optics are kind of bad. Just point that out. The leverage in terms of 15 to 31% versus half a percent doesn't really present a bunch of people who are going to be marching down from the general populace to support this. So I, I, and I haven't yet heard enough clarity around the, kind of the policy view that I'm persuaded, but I'll, I'll stay open and I appreciate your, your patience in allowing me to entertain the conversation. Because normally we don't do that.
We are out of time, but that's not going to stop me from offering folks to make a few final comments. Would anybody like to do so? All right, Deborah, you've got your, gets your marching orders, so to speak. And thank you for the clarity with which you kind of summarized the discussion. you for the clarity with which you kind of summarized the discussion.
Hey, Commissioner Mattel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, based on what we've teed up this evening, it looks like it's going to be a, a very interesting Upriver board meeting in September.
Yeah, for sure. And yeah, as it, as it should be, right? This is an open discussion. I, I presume that there are folks from Upriver who are watching the discussion today, and will probably start getting some feedback from them in the near future. All righty, well, that ends, that ends that. We have just a few minutes remaining for our final item, which is the board wrap-up. Frank, I'll open it up to you first, if you have anything.
I was, I was just going to thank commissioners. I know that we kind of dropped a lot on you this evening, and appreciate the discussion and the feedback. These are not necessarily easy issues, but I think that it's what we're going to have to work with, work together on and work with members of the public on. And so necessary, I feel like we got a lot of good and interesting feedback, so thank you.
Well, I'll just jump in. I was saying to Dick, just ahead of the meeting, that he, for all these years, he's been asking for big sort of strategic issues to be brought to the board, and today, we got two of them. So yeah, Dick, be careful what you ask for, I guess.
I'm happy for that. I think, I think deliberation is a good thing, and the more skilled we are at it, the better as a governing body. So we don't often have the chance to wade into it, but it's a good thing.
Mindy, go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm very appreciative of this format of having a work session. And I know I've been asking for, for work sessions for a little while, and I'm grateful that we've had it. It's a lot easier to focus on these big strategic issues when this is kind of all that we're talking about, instead of putting it in with a much longer board meeting. So while nobody likes having more meetings per month, I hope that we do see more of these when we grapple with some of these bigger topics.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I think, yeah, to separate out once in a while, a big issue like this for its own separate meeting is sort of, just as Mindy said, sort of a useful way to go. We're kind of going popcorn style, I guess, this time. That means like, if you have something to say, you can, you can, you can speak. Uh, go ahead, Sonya.
I, I do wonder if part of the reason that we chose to service Upriver is, is from a water protection standpoint, too? I mean, if you have more control about the power lines and how they situate around the, the, you know, stream there, if that gives us some ability to make sure that how we're operating up there is, you know, protecting the watershed? I don't know, I'm, I'm just speculating. So I'd be curious to find out if that's another kind of portion of the benefit that we get by servicing Upriver is that control that we have both sides. And other than that, thank you for a great meeting. I really appreciated the, the discussion, and I think that, you know, it's really good to have dissenting views and grapple through them. I learn from those different viewpoints, and I change and update my own viewpoints based on them, too. So I really appreciate the discussion.
Well, and I'll end by just appreciating my friend, Dick Helgason. I can't, I can't tell you how much uncomfortable it is to find myself on the opposite side of a policy discussion, and it's not exactly opposite sides, I know that, and so you don't have to, we don't have to get into that. But nonetheless, we're usually in, in lockstep more often, almost all the time, and today we're not. I just want to be clear that there's nobody's opinion, and I mean this, you know, about, about EWEB that I value more than yours and your wisdom. I see everybody, myself included, lean in amongst the staff when you have something to say, because it comes from a place of a lot of experience and wisdom, and so what you say, and caring, and so that, that matters a lot to me. And I, of course, will think a lot about the things you said. They were not, the things you say were not lost in the, in the slightest. So I may just adapt my position come November and December. We'll just have to see.
I, I appreciate that, and I want you to know that I'm not at all offended. It's a good discussion, it's one that we have to have, and it's the appropriate level of discussion. And if there aren't dissenting views now and then, then, then we're probably not doing our work. So I'm not at all offended, and I'm not at all worried about where we come down, because I think you have enjoined the discussion in a way that gives me confidence that wherever we land in the fall, we'll probably be the right place. So no offense.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. Anybody, I'm just scrolling up and down here. You guys are all the size of postage stamps, so if I miss a hand, that's the reason why. I'm just checking real quick. I don't see anybody with a hand up and anything they'd like to say. So with that, I will bang the gavel, so to speak, and close out this meeting. Thanks, everybody. And I, oh, sorry, I just closed out the meeting, so I guess this is unofficial and off the record. I'm not going to be here on July 7th, and I will work with Mindy, as is needed, to make sure that she's all set to run that meeting. All right, have a great few weeks. See you soon.